I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Fields, and myself, Council President Kritzler. There are two items on the agenda tonight. Redmond 2050, 2025 Code Package Part III: Design Standards and Housing Amendments, and Council Talktime. The first item on the agenda, which is the Redmond 2050, 2025 Code Package Part III: Design Standards and 2025 Housing Amendments, will be introduced by our Director of Planning and Community Development, Carol Holland. Go ahead, Director Holland.
Thank you, Council President Kritzler, and good evening, Council members. I am Carol Holland, Planning and Community Development Director, and tonight, Planning and Community Development staff are going to recap the Planning Commission recommendations for updates to design standards and housing provisions. This is the final package of code amendments that is part of Redmond 2050, and staff introduced this item to council on April 1st and sought initial discussion questions at the council's April 22nd Committee of the Hole Meeting. We also did receive some feedback at the microphone last week on items relevant to this package. That information did not get included in your matrix because the packet materials had already been printed, but Ian will speak to those tonight. Staff has developed an issue matrix with those initial responses. We'll add to it for anything that happens this evening, and that is in your packet tonight. So, the objectives for tonight's study session is to increase understanding of the commission's recommendation and discussion, and seek council direction on any requested changes, as well as identifying any additional discussion items the council would like to have included in the May 27th study session. I am joined tonight by Kimberly Dietz, Becky Frye, Jeff Churchill, and Ian Leffort, and I am going to hand the microphone over first to Ian to start the topic on housing provisions.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, so we'll be diving right into housing, and the housing amendments here, above and beyond the general accomplishments of supporting external requirements and advancing the Redmond 2050 themes, mainly cover three topics, which is middle housing implementation, legislative compliance, and some residential adjustments. We'll discuss those topics in greater detail a bit later in the presentation. The housing amendments help implement the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Housing Choices is a broad category of goals and policies that relate to promoting more housing, more market rate housing, more affordable housing, different tenures of housing, and everything else housing-related. The amendments also support the zoning consolidation efforts of Redmond 2050 that are primarily identified in the land use element. And here is the core driver of our housing work. This is taken from our adopted comprehensive plan. The highlight here is, of course, that Redmond needs significantly more housing units by 2050, almost double the 2019 baseline. And, of course, we are now looking at housing not just in the raw count of units, but how those houses serve specific households at different income levels. And over 70% of this net new housing is needed for households that earn 50% AMI or below. At the public hearing, we received community input that was concerned about the impact of the MFTE amendments on retirees and seniors. Those groups are often in those income bins, 50% below because of their limited income. That community member also sent a detailed message to staff over email, and staff earlier this morning provided a response. There were a lot of questions, so the main four key takeaways is that, one, the amendments will not change the zoning for those areas; two, the amendments will not change the MFTE for those areas, either the parameters or the actual residential targeted area; third, the amendments will not lead to redevelopment of the King County Housing Authority's affordable senior housing complexes, and the reason is that KCHA is a mission-driven organization. They're here to provide housing. They are not in the business of tearing down their cost-controlled affordable housing to build market rate housing. And the fourth component is that affordable housing, as a general topic, supports retirees and seniors because they are often in those lower-income households. This means that Redmond's affordable housing strategy serves and protects retiree and senior households. We like to throw AMI and percents around a lot in comprehensive planning housing chat, but what does 50% AMI actually mean? For a household of three, it's about $71,000 a year. And importantly, when we look at the associated rent limit for a two-bedroom unit, it's $1,767 per month. In contrast, the median gross rent is about $2,700. And it's important to note that underlined "all" bedroom counts, because that number skews a bit more towards studios and one-bedroom apartments, just because that's where most of our apartment stock goes. And you'll notice that's a $1,000-a-month difference between the cost-controlled and the market. That is a lot of money, especially if you're thinking, all right, well, we've got 12 months a year, $12,000. You take that immediately off the top of that $71,000. It is a big impact. Redmond uses many strategies to promote housing. Different strategies are appropriate and most effective for serving different area median income bins. Two especially effective strategies that Redmond has used to great success is, of course, our mandatory inclusionary zoning and our voluntary multifamily property tax exemption program. Together, these have created about 950 affordable homes that are currently occupied, which are often integrated within market rate housing developments. Previously, before Redmond 2050, those two tools mainly focused at between 60% to 80% AMI. The Redmond 2050 update is reshifting with a focus at 50% AMI households. This is because that is where most of our need is at, and if you look at the graphic, you'll see the 50% bin is actually sliced in two colors, representing both the land use and tax incentives, and, of course, the direct assistance. And the reason is, in some situations, we may be able to get 50% AMI, but that is not true for all geographic areas and tenures. So we need to recognize that direct assistance and subsidized housing is going to play a critical role in meeting those needs. Here's that additional detail we discussed earlier about the three topics. The first is middle housing implementation, which supports the implementation of middle housing, mainly focusing on transportation topics. So, for example, adjusting site triangle requirements, so that it's a little bit easier to develop middle housing on relatively small lots. Right-of-way improvements, so that if one person at the end of a street chooses to do middle housing, they don't get charged with upgrading the whole right-of-way. The second topic is that the amendments bring the city into compliance with two specific legislative items. The first is House Bill 1042, which has a list of things that local jurisdictions cannot impose on conversions of non-residential-use buildings to residential-use buildings. House Bill 1998 requires jurisdictions to codify co-living/residential suites as in allowed use in specific areas. So the amendments do that. And then our third bucket is our residential adjustments. There's a lot of different pieces included in here, but the theme is that it focuses on improving clarity, fixing outdated references, cleaning up errors, and really just aligning the code with minor adjustments to better represent and implement Redmond 2050. And this does represent much of the volume of the text changes, so many of the pages in your package are associated with this residential adjustment bucket. Here are some examples, same ones we showed initially. In that first top example, it's as simple as adding middle housing to the code, so that everything links up and works. And the bottom one is more explicit clarity on how gross-floor area will be measured in the neighborhood residential zone, including cross-references to the other pieces that are particularly relevant. And here we have a demonstration of how the amendments will change the neighborhood residential affordable housing payment-in-lieu categorization. Currently, there are three different categories: you're detached, you're attached vertically-aligned, and you're attached horizontally-aligned. The different PIL categories here have different PIL rates because of things like different development costs, sale costs, and all those considerations. The original intent was to provide more granularity to better reflect the specific conditions of each site. However, that has led to some confusion, some discussions, and we believe that it is a better approach to have one single PIL category. This will reduce confusion over category classification, which increases predictability, improves customer service, and simplifies administration. This will save both staff and applicants time and stress by reducing the amount of conversations that go back and forth. That is the housing portion, and so now I'll pass it over to Becky and Kim.
I just, I do want to make a brief comment that the council did receive a communication that also came to the Planning and Community Development Department as well on the calculation of payment-in-lues and how that was going to be beneficial to the conversion from the old code to the new code as we transition, and that new payment-in-lieu is applied. So I just wanted to make sure all of you saw that, and the proposal that is before you in a draft resolution that's before you captures the feedback that we've received from master builders and other developers of units that are number eight or fewer.
Thank you. Could you actually walk through just on that quickly, on the phase-in piece of that as well, and just, as long as we're on the topic, just to give us a little bit of a walkthrough on this, too, for the movement of housing?
Oh, sure, I can, I can do that really quickly, and Ian and I have been in many of those conversations with developers. We fashioned it similarly after the phase-in that we did for school impact fees many years ago, when those first went into effect. The rationale being that when something new goes into effect, it takes the market a little bit of time to adjust, and so there were several developers that came to us and said, well, we already, we have properties under contract or something else, assuming something that these did not exist. And so, in some cases, the developer said, oh, we were able to go back and renegotiate our contractual obligation, but that wasn't happening in all cases, so some of them have walked away from their contractual obligations. They felt that this phase-in gave the market an opportunity to adjust to the, to the new fees, and that this would be more beneficial to ensure that housing development continued at a good pace up until the point that the full fee was in effect. The destination isn't changing, it's just phasing in over the course of three years.
Great, thank you. Do you want to continue on and then take questions at the end, or should we, are there any burning questions now that we want to get on this housing section, or is everyone good waiting? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, and it might be premature. I know recently, the governor signed a new house bill into law around condos and encouraging that House Bill 1403 that Representative Jamila Taylor had put forth. Can we see that in any time soon impacting our housing environment here in Redmond?
Well, the hope is it will make condos less risky to the developers who construct them. It doesn't require really anything on our part to put it into effect, because it's all about the liability associated with condo construction. And I would assume, or that we have heard at least, that it may actually open up the condo market again, so creating homeownership opportunities that have been kind of missing in the past couple of decades. Great, thank you.
Great. All right, let's keep going, and then we'll, we'll circle back on all the questions at the end. Give you a moment for your PowerPoint. There we go, design standards. Go ahead.
Sorry, did you change control? Sorry, just want to make sure. Need to take it back. Okay. Sorry, technical. Okay, so before we dive into the specifics, just really just want to step back a second and remind everyone, we began community discussions about design in the fall of 2020, with our very first visioning outreach was what do we want our centers to be like, what are our design priorities? Follow it up with a lot of community conversation, derby days, community dinners, everything from very specific design priorities to what makes a community welcoming, conversations about accessibility and universal design. But we've been working on this particular package since that fall of 2020 conversation. So a lot of this work is really focused on streamlining and adding flexibility, but there are some very specific areas updated directly to implement Redmond 2050, and there's also some updates in here to comply with recent changes in state law. So it's a kind of amalgamation of a long community conversation with a couple of other priorities and recent legislative changes. One of the biggest changes is really refocusing how we write our codes to be less prescriptive and looking more at outcomes. So we have rewritten a number of statements, some whole sections, really trying to focus on, on what are the outcomes that the community is looking for, and how do we allow for the flexibility for the design team and the developers to actually work their way to those outcomes in multiple avenues. So that is the biggest change, and this was a really high-priority request from the 2050, Redmond 2050 community engagement, for a number of different reasons, including the community's desire for more variety and creativity, but also from our developers and designer community. So this new code lays out several pathways for flexibility, including different forms of compliance for different construction types, and also a new alternative design compliance pathway. One of council's questions in the issues matrix was conversations about the ADC, alternative design compliance, for cultural districts, and we just wanted to, for clarity, we have laid out the ability for that to happen right now, but the cultural district implementation is a part of the next package of design standards, is just kicking off. So you'll see that it can be used in that way, so that you don't get caught up on something today. If you want to go in on this set of code, you can get very creative, and you can use this pathway, but we anticipate more work happening for the cultural districts in that next package.
The new section for context-sensitive design collects a number of existing sections together to focus on new development and how it will relate to existing conditions, including environmental and historic resources. It also lays out new rules for a minimum and maximum repetition of buildings and site features to ensure that new construction can fit into a neighborhood without creating too much repetition.
So a new section was created to kick off a lot of our implementation of universal design. This section provides guidance for the incentives package, which is in 2155, and it provides standards for very specific incentives, and it goes with a new Appendix 12, which contains minimum standards and checklist for those incentives. So future work plans will expand upon this. Council has asked about the deletion of one item in the universal design checklist for public assembly buildings and elevators. Staff is comfortable with adding that back in. It was initially deleted because there's some conversation at the state level of potentially allowing for smaller elevators, but this is an item in the public assembly checklist, and so we're comfortable with adding it back in because smaller elevators are not necessarily practical in those types of buildings anyway. So if we, council gives direction to add it back in, we can certainly add that back into that checklist.
The bulk of standard changes and new content are in Section 3000, Building Standards. This is part of a shift from the suburban to urban and modernization of standards, and it includes several new sections that improve the public realm, including weather protection, new standards for ground-floor retail and ground-floor residential. There are also updates to incorporate sustainability and resiliency, such as the integration of solar and other green building techniques. And as we've heard from council, this is also a section where you will find the opportunity for greening buildings, like you can see here.
So for the, much of the remainder of the chapter, the focus really was on the new structure, so moving things into the chapter, updating it to meet new state requirements, and reflecting some other changes that remain in other chapters. In 5000, there is a new section that addresses the flexibility needed for mass timber construction. One of the questions that council asked was, how is the industry reacting to the new tariffs and other federal changes? We provided some feedback in your issues matrix, but since then, I've had several other conversations with industry members, and the industry is actually fairly optimistic. I provided a link to an article in your issues matrix. I've also spoken with Mastac, which is a nonprofit funded partially by Commerce, and they're actually super excited about what Redmond's doing, and they're going to be publishing a new resource next month, and they had indicated that they're looking at putting a Redmond and highlighting what we're doing on the cover of that publication that will come out sometime next month. And this afternoon, I actually attended an AIA Seattle's mass timber meeting, and they were specifically talking about tariffs and supply chains and numbers, and, well, there's some concern that things might change. Currently, mass timber CLT is exempt, lumber's considered essential and not tariffed. There's been some back and forth, and there's some potential virtual concern about things might change in the future, but for right now, business as usual was said many, many times, especially from the Canadian aspect. There is some tariffs on the European imports, but they're currently already tariffed. They did anticipate that there are going to be price increases, but they also had price increases for steel and some other things as well, including one of the steel suppliers that was in that meeting saying that they've already, months ago, notified that the steel costs are going up next month. So in the end, they, as a group, just this afternoon, suppliers and designers in the table believe that there's really no disadvantage, and they're all just operating as usual. Lumber did go up when tariffs were initially announced, but now they're back down, and all volumes and prices are exactly where they were supposed to be. So I just wanted to convey that. We've had lots and lots of positive feedback. Redmond's work was also brought up this afternoon at that meeting as well, at the beginning of it.
Can you just, for the listening public, explain why it is that we'd want to incentivize use of mass timber?
Sure. Mass timber represents one green building technique that allows for a significant advantage for sustainability. It reduces carbon, it has a lot of other features and design outcomes that are exactly what we're looking for in our green building program. And so by use of that mass timber, it accomplishes a number of our green building goals and our ESAP goals as well. It helps us to accomplish that. Also, it is a building type that works really well in areas like our karas, where we have high-water tables, because they're not as heavy buildings, and they don't require extensive underground, and we're limiting our underground work for new buildings. So it actually is an almost ideal building construction type for especially our Marymore and downtown areas, but also it would be super helpful with a number of things in our overlake towers and whatnot. I do want to point out, too, that the costs have come down, and they're, they're still comparable. One of the reasons why this package is really incentivizing is because it's still not quite on par. So the reason why we're incentivizing is to help make it to where those mass timbers are financially beneficial to folks who are looking to develop it, actually will work out for them the same or slightly better with the incentive programs.
For multifamily and single-family and missing-middle sections, there are mostly just minor updates and summary formatting. Other changes in this package include miscellaneous updates to zone names and definitions, and a few other more structural and format changes.
And that's a summary of the package. Planning Commission does recommend approval of the Phase III Design Standards and Miscellaneous That concludes our recap of the Planning Commission's recommendations. I'll turn it back over to the council president to facilitate any discussion, and note, again, we do have an issues matrix in your packet with our initial responses. We're happy to continue the conversation.
Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments from the council? Council Vice President?
Thank you. Could you, I'm still interested in the elevator topic. Could you go over what you had said about us bringing it back into the...
So the initial line item in that checklist, and again, it's for assembly buildings and public buildings, where, you know, your theaters and your community centers. The original conversation came from community members who feel like it's really hard for community members with disabilities to participate in those, because getting in and out of elevators and just trafficking. And so they had requested that there would be a line item in there, just to make sure that two wheelchair users can get on an elevator at the same time in those buildings where you constantly have a lot of traffic. We did get some feedback, though, that the state was looking at potentially allowing for smaller elevators and asking if we could just remove that while there's some conversation about elevator sizes. It did get removed, and then the feedback there was, you know, it is an item that was not in our residential checklist, it's an item that was specifically for those assembly and public buildings. And again, staff is totally comfortable with adding back in, because it is that high-volume traffic buildings, and having the ability to have two wheelchair users, especially for looking at cultural buildings and trying to get those in, it does make sense to have that movement capacity.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I am strongly in support of bringing it back. I was just recently in a hospital with elevators that were rather small, and with a friend with accessibility needs, and every time we got in one, she was like, this elevator's really small, and I'm standing there going, feels fine to me, but I don't have the same needs. So I really strongly think we should, especially for public spaces, like you said, bring this one back. Thanks. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you. On that topic, I think buildings should be more comfortable for everyone to navigate, so I will add a second to elevator language, and if the state wants to have a conversation about that in the future, we'll engage in that conversation. That's my perspective on that. I don't have any additional questions, because this, as was stated at the beginning, is the end of a very long road, and I'm just, like, so thrilled. My only, like, sadness here is that maybe we'll see this team of five, six folks a little less frequently, but a couple things, a couple things just to say. I really appreciate the follow-up on the public comment last week, and the, the follow-up this morning, and the emails to the issues matrix, and the fee-in-lieu explanation was very thorough. Actually, in our Committee of the Hole Meeting today, the Development Services Improvement Project was referenced a few times, and it looks to me like the work on this with the fee-in-lieu, that, that efficiency and wanting to just get the housing built, that, that was applied to this, this question, too. I did respond to the master builders who sent their feedback today, just thanking them for their feedback, and also letting them know there was a, another thing they wanted us to know in that letter, which was, they felt like there would be a data piece missing about projects that don't come to the table in, in, in terms of things that maybe, projects that can't come forward. I shared with them, I'm sure all of you already have, but just so the council's aware, I shared with them our plans to bring housing monitoring to our Committee of the Hole later this year, so that we can be tracking the development pipeline, the housing pipeline, and welcomed their continued feedback on, on that data point. So my thanks to the staff, my thanks to the Planning Commission, and all of the work here to help implement Redmond 2050, unless the conversation generates something, I thought the issues matrix from last time covered all of my remaining. covered all of my remaining questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Salahuddin.
Thank you. No questions for me, just want to, for the record, plus one, what Council Vice President Forsyth said to add that language in.
Great. And actually, I will just make sure we've got a majority of council interested in adding that back in. So if people want to give thumbs on that, we can give some direction on the elevator language. I'm seeing a majority of thumbs, so let's move that back in. Any other comments? Council Vice President Forsyth?
One more, just on the awnings portion. I was just curious how that landed at 80% and not a higher number on the canopy coverage?
It's primarily accounting for back-of-house needs. Yeah, and access, other access needs. Yeah, more the utilitarian.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
On the elevator, what is the cost? The difference? What are we talking about?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but we could pull some information.
So that wasn't my main question. So over the years, as we've talked about environmental standards and green standards, you know, there's always that dynamic of that's going to increase the cost. And then how much incentives do we actually do? And, you know, conflicting goals. Interesting discussion about how we actually found a way to make potential reduced costs through, and it's something that also helps with our environmental goals. Can you just, is there like a sort of overview assessment of where you think the discussion lies, in particular with developer pushback on, you know, what we, you know, that particular conflict or dynamic?
On universal design specifically?
No, just in general, on what we desire to see in our standards and what they are complaining we're overreaching on.
So I can probably speak to that a little bit. Just because the current planning staff are the ones who mostly monitor that, and there's a lot of coordination between long-range planning and current planning, but day-to-day, they're the ones that are fielding the questions. I'd say a lot of the things that we're changing that Ian spoke to, for instance, like street widths and things like standards and details that engineer a space maybe for, like, ideal circumstances of turning around an emergency vehicle. Or some of those kinds of things are the kinds of things that they say add expense. It's a lot of the infrastructure expenses. So I'd say that's what they argue about the very most. Capital facility charges, infrastructure expenses, things like that. But also, the city does a lot of things to incent development to happen. So for instance, like in Overlake, we actually constructed a very large stormwater vault. And so that was an incentive for developers to actually construct there, because then they didn't individually have to create stormwater detention on their own properties and potentially have to reduce the amount of square footage associated with the development yield that they were allowed, they were able to get on that site. So I'd say the things that we're talking about in universal design actually make buildings more desirable to live in, so we hear less about those things than we do about the hard costs associated with infrastructure.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I think that's what I was going to add as my follow-up comment, that in fact, livability does in fact work in everybody's favor. And I apologize if my next question is too theoretical, but I was intrigued by the 50% AMI and the difference between the market rate and the AMI rate. And I hadn't really given it a lot of thought before, but then now I am. And it occurred to me that I don't understand that, when, well, let me put it this way. Let's say, as an example, Microsoft does follow through and other major employers follow through on what we're hearing about layoffs. That potentially would reduce our average income in Redmond, potentially. And the market continues to go up, the housing market continues because of inflation and other pressures. So when does that get set, that, the use of that math? And is there this possibility that it could become unworkable or not meaningful? I always thought that the two sort of went up together, but there's the potential that that wouldn't happen. So, you know, how, when does it become, it's set and for what period of time? And then, do we have any flexibility, or is that all state law?
The answer to the first question is that they are updated annually, and the values are not only the raw baseline number, but they're adjusted for household size. And so it goes up slightly if you have more people, goes down. To your question about the overall market, that is absolutely true. And one of the reasons why 50% AMI units and even deeper are so valuable, there are many professions that don't start you out at 70,000. It is, in this wonderfully blessed, strong economic environment, we have lots of opportunities. We also have a very large supply of high-income earners that pull that AMI up, and it can keep going up. So we keep on top of it through an annual update, but it's absolutely one of the factors that highlights the need for us to target those deeper AMIs.
Thank you. Also, ask about flexibility for us to adjust.
I did.
And that number comes from HUD and is translated to, is given to Arch, and they actually post it on their website.
Okay.
Annually.
And I've always expressed the concern that what we call affordable housing is just, potentially just less expensive housing, but not really affordable. We don't necessarily, the two aren't always the same.
We live in a very economically wealthy area, and you're right that housing is not attainable for everyone.
Which leads to the next question, and I hadn't, and I think you and I have had discussions about this, and it was brought up tonight, and that is the other part of that, that split that you had, where you get the benefit of affordable housing, but you also get support. And we do have flexibility on that, right? That's a city issue.
Well, remember, as part of GMA, we, and part of housing allocations, we got housing targets. Those housing targets actually were divided into, more granularly, into various different need assessments. And if memory serves me correctly, around 11,000 of the units that we are needing by 2050, I believe, are in that zero to 30% range? There it is. So those, we actually do not have flexibility. Those are our, those are our assigned needs and the ones that we are tasked with trying to attain.
And maybe if I could add something, is that, you know, under state law, we have flexibility in what AMI we target with our mandatory inclusionary zoning program.
Right.
But we have, as Ian said, made a policy decision in the comprehensive plan to target 50% AMI, because that's where the need is, as both Ian mentioned and you have explained.
That helps. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? One follow-up on that. The AMI that we use, is that, is that a Redmond AMI? I thought we used the King County AMI.
It is not Redmond-specific. It is the broader area, because that's the data that is provided by HUD.
Okay. And so is that the whole county, or is that part of our, our part of the county? I feel like we've covered this before.
I think it's just the metropolitan cir, I'm getting my databases confused. I'd have to follow up and check.
We will put it in the matrix.
That would be helpful, yeah. Because I think there is the kind of Redmond-specific number and then the broader number of what we actually use.
I know it's not a Redmond number.
Yeah.
And it is a number that ends up being provided to us, but we can verify the scoped geography of that number for you.
Thank you. Well, Councilmember Nova Kamina?
Thank you. Just bringing it back to the elevator conversation that we're having a little bit ago. Fresh from Fire Ops and thinking about the ongoing conversations that we have with Fire about the challenges that we have as we grow vertically, being fresh from Fire Ops, if we go smaller, then how can our fire and EMT paramedics get up there with gear when they've got essentially a mobile emergency room to take care of our residents and our community? How would they be able to get in there with smaller elevators? So it's kind of another plus one for the larger elevators conversation.
Thank you. I'll just add my comments on here. Really wonderful work and really years of work in here, and great to see it all come together and to see our 2050 vision coming to life through these updates. And it'll be exciting to see those go into effect. Two things I just wanted to highlight that I think are pretty exciting. I really love the section on context-sensitive design. I actually think back to when I was on the Planning Commission, going to a visioning session we did in Marymore Village area, and where people were really envisioning what we wanted to see as design, but talking so much about, "We're in Marymore, right next to this park," right? And thinking about, "How does that influence the type of buildings and the type of design we'd want to see and what would create that place making?" And I think it also speaks to some of the things we discussed during the 2050 discussions of, "We're going to add some more flexibility, and we're not going to have," we were removing certain design standards, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to be doing some place making and making sure that we're super intentional about that. Also something that I think I've basically heard as one of the most common things when you hear people sometimes gripe about downtown is repetition of things. And I really love kind of having that, some of those standards in here, to think about, how do we influence that while also giving that flexibility and the universal design pieces that encourage innovation as we look for development in our corridor? So I just want to commend you all for thinking through that, and I think it's exciting to see that going into our code. Do you have a comment?
I do, and thank you for mentioning that. And I think this context-sensitive design will actually help foster creativity. But I hope all of you who were able to stand on the downtown station area platform over the weekend were able to look out on all the new development that's happening in downtown Redmond and noting that there is a lot of unique, interesting construction going on. And it was just such a striking view for me, because I hadn't been up there in some time, and I just think it's pretty amazing. So, thank you.
I will agree. And I was not trying to do a knock on downtown, because I do think that actually, and kudos to our Design Review Board members and our staff and everyone who has helped to influence what has been developed in recent time. I think some of the feedback that we hear in community has been from what went up in the first couple developments. But then we've seen, especially in recent times, so many really creative and interesting buildings that have gone up. And I agree, just sitting there, you know, watching the train overhead and looking at all of these buildings where all of these new neighbors are living, it's just really, it's exciting. Definitely a future for our city. So just wanted to highlight that. Also, wanted to just appreciate the responsiveness to working with our development community, especially around the middle housing, to say, "How do we make this work?" While also continuing to ensure that we incentivize getting enough funding to be able to address our affordable housing needs and making sure that when new construction comes in, that we're getting that payment in lieu. So just want to thank the staff for doing that, working and getting creative on it. And I look forward to voting on this. I don't see, oh, one more hand raised. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, just since we're talking about good things and how, when we work together, we can actually make things happen pretty fast. When I first came onto the council, there was a lot of unhappy people in Redmond, because what they saw, the trajectory they saw of the city that was emerging, was something that they found pretty distasteful. There was a very deliberate moment after I came on council that the council and the mayor began to say, "That might be right. We need to make some real changes on how we build and how we move forward." So the fact that we can turn that around and result in the design and a city that actually works and is enjoyable and beautiful from its built infrastructure as well as its natural infrastructure is a testament to working together. And the last thing I would say on it is, I'm always astounded, and somebody brought this up in a Bellevue meeting not that long ago, an example in Barcelona, Spain, where the council in 2015 decided to build superblocks and achieve mobility in a way that actually protected what they called superblocks, nine-square blocks. When you go in there, it's six miles an hour, and it's pretty pedestrian-friendly. They did that in a very short period of time. So Redmond should applaud themselves for what we've done deliberately in a very short period of time. So thank you all.
Thank you. So seeing no other hands, it looks like, based on the memo here, you might be coming back maybe to bring the whole thing together for us at committee, and then it's requested to put this on consent for June 17th. Is that right?
That's right. So if there aren't any further questions, we had saved time for study session later this month, but seeing that we're not having a lot of additional outstanding items, what we would recommend is that we would update the matrix. We'd come back to committee of the whole with the whole package in, or the 2PW in June, and then adoption on consent, hopefully on June 17th.
Great. Is there any objection to moving forward with that path? Seeing none, thank you all so much. We'll close out this item and just give a big thanks to you, as well as our Planning Commission, for the many hours of detailed work.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is council talk time. On council talk time tonight, we do have a policy proposal being led by Council Vice President Forsyth. So we'll consider that first, and I'll turn it over to Council Vice President Forsyth to give us a brief description of the proposal.
Thank you. So as the primary sponsor of this welcoming resolution, I'm here tonight before you with deep conviction and pride and support of our transgender neighbors, family members, coworkers, and friends here in Redmond. Redmond has long been a community that values inclusion, innovation, and equity. This resolution reaffirms those values. It makes clear to our community transgender people are respected, protected, and welcomed. Across the country, we're seeing a wave of harmful policies targeting trans individuals, especially trans youth. Those policies have no place in a just and compassionate society, and they certainly have no place here in Redmond. Here, we say clearly, "You belong, you are valued, and your rights matter." This resolution is more than words on paper. It's a public commitment, along with all our other welcoming resolutions, to ensure that city services are inclusive, to listen to trans voices, and to push back against the hate with policy grounded in human dignity. We're not immune to discrimination, but we can be intentional about creating a city where every resident feels safe and seen, and that's what this resolution continues to do, along with our others. I want to thank the community advocates, especially our local LGBTQIA+ organizations who have worked on this and who continue to work tirelessly to make Redmond a more welcoming place for all. This resolution is a step forward, not the end, and in our ongoing work for equity. I urge my colleagues to join me in moving this resolution forward and sending a message to every trans person in Redmond. We see you, we stand with you, and you are welcome here.
So in terms of this resolution, so the proposal, it would be, do you want to just share some of the details in terms to just share some of the details in terms of the process or do you want me to speak to that? So I was really pleased to co-sponsor this resolution alongside Councilmember Nova Camina. Councilmember Nova Camina, do you have any comments that you want to make? And then I can speak to the process as well.
I don't have any, any comments that I had prepared to, to share today. Just taking a look at where we are today as opposed to things that, you know, we, we were dealing with 30 years ago. And there's, there's a through line in that we will make some progress and then we come back. We make some progress, we come back. But the thing that we can do to safeguard against regressing any further is by creating policy, by putting it down on words and then walking that out, looking for how, how we are. And with this resolution, it does, it does clearly state and by how, not just these are the words that we're saying, but, and this is how we're going to walk this out, which has been wonderful. Back in November, you know, we, we were taking a look at the changing landscape at the federal level. And while that can be very disorienting and also distracting, things that, that we kept saying over, and I would hear this individual from you as my colleagues, but also the message that we were saying as a council collective is to control the controllables. What is it that we can do at the local level? And this is a wonderful example of what we can do at the local level.
Thank you so much. So, and as a note, a similar version of this resolution has been passed by some of our neighboring cities as well. So in terms of just the process on this, so I will just note what we had, we had talked about so that councils, council members can consider this. And then we'll move to just whether or not the council wants to continue forward on work on this item since as, for the listening public, as, as a reminder, this isn't whether we're approving this item, but whether the council wants to continue the work forward on it. So what we talked about was if the council is interested, we can follow up and giving us the direction, we can set up some time to meet with our chief policy advisor to review the language. The, the three of us would, would do so. We could also have council members send any feedback that you have on the resolution to Deidra if, if you have any, any suggestions and she could compile those to be able to share with, with those who've worked on this to kind of compile any minor changes to that, to the resolution or feedback. And then we also, just to be able to, to look at any considerations, should there be some, that should be reviewed in executive session next week, we can put an executive session on the agenda with our attorney to be able to discuss anything related to this resolution. So that would be, those would be some of the, the next steps should the council be interested in furthering this item. And the, and the goal would be to have this, if we've got further down that road, to actually pass it in the first meeting of Pride Month, June. So that's the schedule that we talked about. Councilmember Fields.
So yes, I would express my support for continuing this resolution. I think as Councilmember Forsyth laid out, there's a real need to, to send the message. And I think the words that were used were for the people in Redmond. I think it goes farther and beyond that. I think what Redmond does is seen outside of Redmond. And I think that we've become part of that conversation and part of that voice that says, that kind of hate doesn't have a place anywhere. So I, I am in firm support of this resolution and, and the need for it. I am fortunate that on Sundays right now, I get to umpire over in Seattle, LGBTQ rec leagues. And in the process, I get to know a lot of what people are saying and what they're thinking. And there is a concern, there is a growing fear and we need to make sure that Redmond is that, part of that voice that says, don't be afraid because this is, there is, this is not going to stand. This kind of conversation, dialogue and hate is not going to stand in this country.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Stewart?
I support this resolution and the council's continued work on it and the deadline to have on our own trajectory of having this adopted by the beginning of Pride Month. Thank you.
Great. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Just one more thing I wanted to add. As we recently saw Salt Lake and Spokane adopt the, a version of the Pride flag, I would like to amend section, since I turned this in a month ago, I would like to amend section five to add maybe under that actively celebrate and uplift that we will additionally raise the Pride flag every June, if folks are amenable.
Thank you. Any other comments? Otherwise, we can just do a thumbs on, I think I've actually already done the count that, that we have enough to move forward, but just so that we can do thumbs on whether folks are good moving forward to pursue more on this. All right. Seeing, seeing unanimous here, so great. Okay. So we will move forward with the, the process as outlined. And I'll just say, I'm excited to be able to work on this and to have a council that's so aligned in support of our, our community, our trans community or to us LGBTQIA+ community. So yeah, and hopefully it will be a really good Pride Month coming together. Other items for Council Talk Time? I'm not seeing any. I will just do a quick little reminder on upcoming events. This Saturday, the Redmond Senior and Community Center turns one. So happy first birthday, Redmond Senior and Community Center. There's going to be a celebration at the center from 10:00 AM to 1:00. I think right after 10:00, the mayor's going to make some remarks and there'll be, I think, some cake. So if, if council members want to go, also the United Festivals this weekend. So for those who, you know, to be able to celebrate Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Month, that's going to be a really wonderful festival to be able to gather. There's also a ribbon cutting on Friday for the Best Brains Learning Center. So I'm, hopefully you all have got that on your calendar as well. Just wanted to highlight that. And next week, One Redmond is having its Eastside Economic Outlook Summit. And I'm not sure, it is, actually I will ask, are any council members planning to go to the PSRC 2025 Annual General Assembly next week? Councilmember Stewart is. Okay, great. And I think our mayor's going to go, so we'll have some good representation there. Just as council members note, all council members and the mayors are invited to that. So I think, and then I'll just remind everyone, two weeks out, so you have it on your calendar. We have our council conversations coming up on the 29th. We also have a community meeting on teen services the day before. And I think we are kind of, we're at our max in terms of council members. I'm going to confirm and make sure that those of you who've signed up know who you are in terms of us not going beyond quorum. And I will let you know that we are following up to make sure we can get an additional conversation for council on that topic as well. But yeah, we'll look forward to our council conversations on May 29th in Grass Lawn Park. And there should be, if you want to pass along, there's all the advertisements going out on that right now. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. You briefly mentioned the Economic Outlook event that is next week. I just saw that in my email today, so I don't know if I've missed it. Do we have council representation for that event? Is anyone planning to attend? Councilmember Sal Houdin, Councilmember Nova Camina, maybe. So I'm hearing, I'm seeing like yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you, council members. And if there's nothing else for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.